Commissioners meeting. Mr., we did meet in executive session before the meeting to discuss a real estate matter. And we also had an executive session last Thursday evening. On a personnel matter. Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. DiMilio.
Here.
Mr. Oliva.
Here.
Mr. McCluskey.
Here.
Mr. Siegel.
Here.
Mr. Lewis. I'm sorry, Mr. Holmes.
Here.
Mr. Wexler.
Here.
Mr. Quinn.
Here.
Dr. Hart.
Here.
Okay, it is with a heavy heart that I speak tonight on behalf of the family. On behalf of his family to inform the public that Commissioner Andy Lewis is ill. Andy is presently a patient at the hospital of the University of Pennsylvania. Commissioner Lewis does not have a definitive diagnosis yet and won't until later this week. We note right now that Commissioner Lewis will not be able personally to help with constituents for some time. Township manager Dave Berman and all the commissioners, myself included, will assist Andy's constituents to the greatest extent possible during Andy's illness. Commissioners Lewis, Lewis's family asks that everyone respect Andy's and their privacy during this very difficult time. Your thoughts and prayers and kindness, kind wishes are greatly appreciated. But we do ask, on behalf of his family, that you refrain from contacting them at this time and please refrain from speculating about his condition. Thank you for your very, very kind cooperation and concern during this immense political time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Oliva. Chief Ayala, would you say the pledge, lead us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America.
America, and to the republic which it stands. One nation, under God. Divisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to make a slight change in the agenda and the first, next item will be a proclamation, presentation by Commissioner Quinn.
Okay, it's with a great honor that I present this proclamation to Irene Bermel. And it reads, whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania takes great pleasure in recognizing or significant milestones in the lives of individuals residing in the community. And whereas Irene Bermel was born March 21st, 1921, Irene has reached her 100-year birthday. And whereas Irene is one of six sisters and one grandfather, all from New York. All sisters, while all sisters have passed, her last remaining sibling is her brother Bob in South Carolina. And whereas Irene moved to Haverford in 1956, and moved to Haverford in 1956, Irene was married to Harold. They were married for 72 years. She and her husband raised the daughter Judy who resides in Cleveland and the son Bruce who resides in Middleton, Delaware. She has six grandchildren and nine great-grandchildren. And whereas she worked in the cosmetic department of Gimbel's Department Store on 69th Street for many years and later at the Dunwoody Retireman Community as a caregiver. She has been a member of the Lansdowne Bible Chit Apple and she still gets picked up every Sunday and gets her hair done each week by a salon in the township. And whereas Irene is continually being blessed, her son visits her once a week, does her food chitopping, and also by many neighbors on Willow that do her yard work, retrieve her newspapers and take her trash out to the curb. Whereas Irene is a special person to her children, great-grandchildren, nieces and nephews and friends. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford or Commonwealth of Pennsylvania offer our deepest congratulations to Irene Bermel and wish her continued health and happiness. Proclaim this day of the 21st of March and by the Township of Haverford Board of Commissioners to Jerry Hart and Connor Quinn.
Thank you very much and congratulations.
Awesome, Connor.
Thanks, guys.
Next item on the agenda is our citizens forum. I think our first speaker is Amy Moskowitz from the Public Library.
Good evening. Good evening and thank you for having me. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm here tonight to welcome all of the commissioners and members of the community back to the library. The Haverford Township Free Library is pleased to announce that we reopened on Monday, April 5th, welcoming patrons back into the building after having served the community on a curbside-only basis for the past three and a half months. Between December 16th, 2020 and April 3rd, 2021, the library served more than 7,700 patrons and circulated more than 17,500 items. At times, there were even lines of patrons down the sidewalk, socially distanced, of course. Now that we're open to the public, our grab-and-go service offers patrons the opportunity to enter the library, choose materials and check out. For health and safety reasons, patrons will notice several changes in our operations, which I'd like to go over now. Fifteen patrons will be permitted in the building at a time and patrons are asked to wait at the front entrance for admittance. Patrons will be able to browse for up to 30 minutes. The convenient contactless pickup will still be available. The first hour of each day is reserved for seniors and those with compromised immune systems, and that's Monday through Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Printing and faxing is available with advance notice requested. Patrons can contact the reference desk for more information. Museum passes are offered for checkout depending on availability. All programs will continue virtually and no in-person programs will take place at this time. A mask covering the nose and mouth must be worn at all times when in the library regardless of a patron's vaccine status. If a person does not have a mask, however, the library can provide that person with one. To accommodate for social distancing, we are asking all patrons to maintain a six-foot distance from one another. One person will be permitted in an aisle at a time. Computer use is not available for at least the two weeks after, the first two weeks after reopening. Seating will not be available and all meeting rooms are currently closed and book donations are not currently being accepted. On behalf of all of the library staff, I would like to happily welcome all of you back to the library and we hope to see you in the library very soon. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Felicia Hurwitz.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. I am Felicia Hurwitz at 345 Farwood Road. Last month, the commissioners were considering a resolution on the Covanta incinerator contract and had a discussion of environmental injustice and waste reduction. And by the way, I do support that resolution on Covanta. Yet, right here in Haverford, we have inexplicable laws that increase our solid waste burden by forbidding composting of food waste. Haverford's Climate Action Plan, published over 10 years ago, that's the old one, not the new one, proposed encouraging composting of food and yard waste. But our laws do the opposite and nothing was changed for the good after that last climate action plan. According to project drawdown, reducing food waste is the number one most impactful solution to addressing climate change. According to the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, food scraps and yard waste together currently make up more than 28% of what we throw away. Composting produces a valuable soil additive. Haverford Town Ordinance 138-24 through 28 explicitly excludes composting of food waste or any other waste that isn't grass or leaves as punishable by $1,000 fine or jail time. I have made a chart of all the ordinances on composting for each township in Delaware County. Most townships, and this is important, most townships do not restrict composting at all. Our township has the honor of being the most restricted and punitive in the county. At a time when we are trying to reduce food waste and save our environment, I asked the township why I can be punished by $1,000 fine per offense for composting coffee grounds or banana peels. Furthermore, laws against composting add to environmental and social inequity. Compost is a source of free, quality soil to grow food in one's backyard. By making composting a punishable crime, you are saying that one must be wealthy enough to purchase soil amendments in order to grow fruit, vegetables or herbs for food independence. I therefore ask you to rescind or repeal ordinance 1 through 8, 2, 4 through 2, 8 completely. This will align you with most of the other townships in our county. I know that there's some consideration that we don't really enforce the ordinances we have. However, it's not actually for the legislative branch of the government to decide how things are enforced. It's for this branch to write good law that will be enforced and interpreted by the other branches. So we need the laws to be good, not just say, oh, we're not going to enforce them. From a fiscal perspective, it makes sense to encourage and enable composting. It would save taxpayer money on waste disposal. Most importantly, let's have a more food-secure, environmentally-friendly and sensitive township. And just one more thing, I know that there's been some talk that actually the laws can be interpreted to allow a compost, an enclosed compost bin, but a plain reading of the ordinance says it can't be. Closed or open, it's illegal to compost food in Haverford Township. And I ask you to just repeal this bad law and start all over or consider, do we even need to limit composting at all in our township? Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Fred Stigerwald.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you fine. Thank you.
Sure. Fred Stigerwald, 237 North Bellfield Avenue, Haverford. And it's in regard to the Kennedy Law. About 10 years ago, I'm with Hilltop Baseball League, one of our members passed away from cancer. He was also on the Board of Directors at Manoa Firehouse. At that time, we approached Parks and Rec Board and Assistant Township Manager Tim Denny to name a field after him at Hilltop Park. We were told that we were unable to do so due to the Kennedy Law, which made sense to us that five years were required due to the emotion of the situation before anything could be done. We agreed that we'd build a pavilion in his honor down at the park, which is still there. However, we were told we weren't allowed to name it after Lou. And thus, we then decided to name it after, call it the Memorial Pavilion, but put Lou's name on the side. So my question back to the township is, what are the policies and procedures to rename a field in Haverford Township? Does the Kennedy Law even exist as we were told back in 2009? And in the future, how can a ward or community or civic association be more involved when fields are being renamed in their wards specifically? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Berman, are there any other speakers?
No, that's it for now.
There are two letters. The first one is from Dr. John Williams at 730 Panreal Road in Haverford. Your Commissioners Lewis and Stevenson, I think this was also addressed to the Fourth Ward Commissioner in Lower Marion Township. It has now been more than one year since Haverford College barred the community from its campus. When the closure first occurred, the college cited its temporary need to exclude outsiders in order to reduce the risk of COVID-19 transmission. Yet, one year later, with the pandemic on its way and vaccination rates rising, more than 31% of Pennsylvanians have received at least one shot and one vaccination has been shown to confer nearly complete immunity to the virus. The campus remains closed. Such is the state of affairs despite the fact that vaccination has been shown to prevent both symptomatic and asymptomatic infections, thereby making viral transmission from vaccinated persons such as myself almost impossible. Why does the campus remain closed? Some say that COVID-19 will be with us forever. Does this mean that the Haverford College campus will remain always closed? For some background, Haverford College purports to be an institution of purely public charity. As such, it pays almost no real estate tax on the lands and buildings of its more than 200-acre campus. Generations of Pennsylvanians from Haverford Township, Lower Marion and beyond have used the college campus for recreation without explicit permission to do so. I believe that because of this right, Haverford College neighbors were willing to subsidize through their taxes an institution that has little involvement with or relevance to its surroundings. As a taxpayer, however, I find it intolerable that the college campus has remained closed to the surrounding community for a full year and counting and that the college employs a roving security force that even now threatens those who use the campus with arrests. The locking of the college gates at Armont Avenue in Lower Marion Township is particularly offensive for reasons of equity that require no explanation. For my part, having run on the campus's nature trail in a prescriptive manner for more than 21 years, I have sued the college asserting my right to use the trail regardless of the college's pronouncements or protestations. This case is pending in the Court of Common Pleas, Delaware County, and my good faith assertion of a prescriptive easement prevents me from being convicted of trespass. See Commonwealth versus NAMIC 444, PA Superior Court, 9. I suspect, however, that many of your constituents and public at large who have similarly used the campus and the nature trail are unaware that the college has no right to bar their presence. Instead, these members of the public, while trying to assert their rights, are chased away or threatened with arrest. As noted above, Haverford College is at present immune to real estate taxation because it claims to be an institution of purely public charity under Pennsylvania law. To qualify for that designation, the college must meet all of the following criteria. Advance a charitable purpose. Donate or render gratuitously, a substantial portion of its services. Benefit a substantial and indefinite class of persons who are legitimate subjects of charity. Or relieve the government of some burden. And five, operate entirely free from private profit motive. Yet, what governmental burden does the college relieve when it bars its neighbors from use of its campus or when it summons township police to chase away runners and walkers legally using the grounds? Before March 2020, the college provided a kind of park in which its taxpaying neighbors could recreate, thus relieving the need for Haverford and Lower Marion Townships to provide the same. This is no longer the case. I therefore ask that both of you, in the interest of your constituents, contact the college and inquire about how long they intend to keep their campus closed. Furthermore, I ask that you communicate just how much Haverford's actions degrade the college's reputation in its surrounding communities. For my part, my case continues and I intend, if necessary, to challenge the college's status as an institution of purely public charity within the context of Pennsylvania law. You should also be aware that the college has now, for more than seven months, maintained without township approval illegally large signage at the intersection of Walton Lane and College Avenue. I ask that the Haverford Township manager investigate this immediately. Similar signage exists along Lancaster Avenue in Lower Marion Township and may also be in violation of the Lower Marion Code. Finally, I believe that the time has come to require the college to make payments in lieu of taxes to both townships, to Lower Marion and Haverford School Districts and to Delaware and Montgomery Counties. Since I reported on this topic to the Haverford Township Board of Commissioners last fall, the University of Pennsylvania has begun to make similar payments to the city of Philadelphia. With an endowment of over $500 million, I believe the Haverford College can well afford to do something similar. Sincerely yours, John Williams. And our last letter from the night is from Anthony Morinelli at Harford Hall on Mill Road. Gentlemen, at present, Haverford Township lacks a history page. I would like to offer the township all the information on the website I have compiled. This website details the history of each neighborhood with full documentation. All information has been carefully researched and should be accurate. Amendments are always appreciated. I would happily continue to amend all pages. The township would have the right to adjust or amend any entry. Please take a moment to present the website at the Monday evening meeting on April 12th. And Mr. Morinelli attaches his website, which is ilivenharford.com. That concludes the citizens forum. I think we're all happy to see the library reopening. I know my wife was particularly pleased to be able to go there again. In regards to Ms. Hurwitz's comments, I, you know, a long-term composter, I agree with her that we should probably take a look at our ordinances. I think probably the next best step would be to refer this to the EAC and our Health Advisory Boards and get their comments on the current ordinance. In regards to Mr. Stigerwald's comments, I think we will be discussing this later in the meeting. Dr. Williams' letter in regard to Haverford College is currently a legal matter. I don't think that there is much for us to comment on. I believe our township manager will be issuing in regards to this sign. I'm sure our code officer can take a look at that. And finally, Mr. Morinelli, the township website does have a brief historical overview on its website, but it's for those of, who've had an opportunity to take a look at Mr. Morinelli's website. His is clearly very well researched and much more extensive. It is somewhat biased towards changing the name of our town from Haverford or Haverford to Harford, but it does have a wealth of information on it. Personally, I'd like to see a more extensive township history on our website. And perhaps Mr. Morinelli and Haverford Historical Society could partner on an upgrade. I don't know if any other commissioners have any comments on. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a presentation by Phil Goldsmith, President of the Library Board, a library update.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, let me express our appreciation for being given the opportunity to present to you tonight the commissioners present and those in the past have been great supporters of the library. It's because of that support that we're the most heavily-used library of the county's 26 libraries. We want to remain among the best. We believe that good libraries, like good schools and recreation facilities, is a competitive edge that makes a community a more attractive place to live and raise families. We're here tonight to present a plan that would allow the library to expand at its present site and maintain the competitive edge we have in the years to come. I'm joined here tonight by Sukrit Goswami, our library director, who joined us two years ago. He has the benefit of serving in other library systems. He comes to us with a master's degree in business administration and a degree in library science. Our team also consists of Bill Wilson, who is zooming in from Washington. He promised me he would not wear a cheese hat today, but refused to wear an eagle's hat. He's a foremost library consultant who has held senior positions in libraries and he's been advising us since 2013. Ken Matthews of CBD SI is an owner reps firm which has done significant work in Haverford Township. Their firm represents the local school district, Haverford School District, for the past 20 years, including its current project. Eric Traynor, who is the lead architect on our renovations since the inception of the project, he is with Bernardin. Lee Casacchio has been on this project since the beginning when the library first engaged in his firm, Casacchio Associates, which is now part of Bernardin. He has been involved in the design of several local libraries. And Scott Low is one of our trustees who's been at the helm of this project for the board. He's a civil engineer, a principal in a consulting firm that provides expert testimony before courts and arbitration agencies and is the author of three books on construction. We are blessed to have him contribute as a public service, his time and role as a trustee. And we have Jim Brown, another member of our building committee, who is a member of the committee. He's a former college administrator who's overseeing the construction of several buildings. In short, I think we, the library and the township, is blessed with having a very competent, experienced and professional team. Sukrit, you're going to show the next slide, please. I just want to give a short background. I think we're all familiar with the background. I don't mean to, don't want to go into great detail of it, but I do want to go back to September 2020 when we did appear before the commissioners. We basically said we favored the Brookline site mainly because it would give us more onsite parking and it would allow us to build a facility from scratch that would be the appropriate size for us. We certainly understood the cost restrictions that the township had and we accepted that. I said at the time that we would go back to the drawing board and see if there wasn't a way to take our current site, our current location, and see if we couldn't get more space from there. And that is something that we've been doing for the past several months. I will not avoid a spoiler alert. I'm going to give it to you now. We believe we have found a solution to provide an additional 5,200 square feet of usable space. We believe it will, it's going to cost more than the initial renovation, but significantly less than the Brookline proposal. It will provide a 20% increase in our facility and we believe will be a great investment, not only for the library, but for our community. What I'd like to do now is ask Bill Wilson, who did a space study in 2016 for the library, which by the way, can which by the way, concurred with another space study we had in 2003. And they both came up with the same agreement. We are undersized, we don't have enough space. So Bill is gonna go through how we stack up, why it's important that we think we have more space, and then others will speak to our needs. And obviously, we'll be able to answer, hope to answer your questions at the end.
All right, thank you. I appreciate your time, and we'll move quickly through this. First of all, we want to say that the Haverford Free Library is undersized, and you can see the numbers there. We've provided some comparisons with nearby counties, with nearby states. Basically, .5 square feet per capita below is considered to be deficient by almost anyone's standard. And in fact, .5 square feet per capita is sometimes referred to as the West Virginia standard, since for many years, that was the standard applied by that state. The expansion that's being talked about would take the Haverford Library from .426 square feet per capita up to .532 square feet per capita. We're providing the other numbers there not to say that they're appropriate. In fact, some of the libraries are probably quite large. However, we do provide those numbers to show that the request for additional square footage is within the very sensible range. Next slide. As Phil mentioned, there was a study done in 2003 that indicated the inadequacy of space. When we did our initial study in 2013, we came to the same conclusion that the space deficiencies, in fact, are very real, and that they limit the service that the library is able to perform. Next slide. This is the current footprint, as you're probably well aware. Library exists on three floors. The total square footage, usable square footage, is about 21,000 square feet. It isn't quite equally distributed because some of the basement space really is unusable for public purposes. Next slide. The 5,200 square foot addition would be in addition to the second level. Now, this is the first floor, floor plan, but if you look at the dotted line to the right, you can see the configuration of that second floor addition. So the second floor addition would be over the top of a portion of the parking area. There would be a free lane that would still exist between the library and neighboring properties. But that second floor addition corresponds with the dotted line, would bring the total square footage to about 26,200 square feet. Next slide. This is the second floor. The hashed area shows the areas that would be added. So those are the areas that would be in addition and stretch out over the top of the parking lot. Again, taking it to 26,200 square feet or a little bit over 5.53 square feet per capita. Next slide. This is the lower level, really providing this for a couple of purposes. Number one, to say the community room would be vastly improved. The other is to answer a question. The blue area on the left that says no renovation in this area will be used as storage. There was an earlier plan that talked about trying to reclaim the space that essentially is the basement below the old bank lobby. And in fact, that idea, to use it as public space, really has been rejected for a couple of reasons. One is the cost, the ceiling height is clear, only about seven feet. To make it usable would require digging down into the soil, creating a new lower basement, soil conditions, what might be found and so on, as well as the fact that when you were done with a large investment in money, you'd have substandard space, led to the rejection of that idea. Next slide. I'd like to invite Eric Trainer just to make a couple of remarks about this sketch. Eric?
Yes, thank you, Bill. Good evening, everyone. I assume that many of you are familiar with the design where we left off in 2018. Much of the existing library building will remain as was designed in 2018, and the new addition will pick up on some of the elements of the 2018 design. Particularly, on the top south elevation, the meeting room on the right-hand side will take on similar roofline angles and materials as the new entry to the library, which is on the far left of that addition. Materials will be glass in metal curtain wall systems. The panels that are between the two, I'll call them pavilions, will be made of synthetic stucco material, also known as EPHOS, or Drive-It is one of the common companies that manufactures this material. We had introduced that into the 2018 design to replace the existing insulated panels that are on the 1970s addition to the building that are presently leaking. So we're replacing those panels with this synthetic stucco material, and then we'll continue that material on the parking lot side as well. The lower elevation is the elevation that would face onto the parking lot. You can see where we would have parking below the second floor, as Bill mentioned, and then we would again have a combination of glass, what we call curtain wall systems, and the synthetic stucco material for the exterior. The height of the addition would not exceed the height of the existing building. The second elevation, you can see where the existing brick cooling tower enclosure is, roughly in the middle, and we're well below that height of that portion of the building. Bill, I'll turn it back over to you. That's the extent of our elevations.
Thank you. Next slide. This, of course, is the question, why invest in the expanded Haverford Township Free Library? We want to provide you with just a few answers to that question. First one really is that the size of the library directly impacts its ability to provide the kinds of services that are expected in 21st century public libraries. Public library is not your grandfather's public library. Haverford is blessed to have a demographic that's ideal for public library use. It shows in the usage that you get even with a building that is quite deficient in terms of space. Perfect demographics for public libraries is a little better than average income, but not too high, a little more education than most, but often not at the very highest end. Your demographics fit, and the usage is there. Here are a couple of the figures regarding that usage, and I'll let Sukrit speak to this.
Good evening, everyone. So our library is one of the busiest, or the busiest, library in Delaware County, and these stats tell us the truth. For many, many years, we have been number one circulating library in entire county. 327 plus, thousand-plus items in one year speaks volumes. We have offered 946 programs in one year. So if you think about it, at least three programs a day. Program attendance, over 27,000 people have attended our programs. There are many more stats, like we have over 180,000 people who visited our library in 2019. But details are for later, and if you have questions, I will be able to answer those. So again, like we want to ensure that we continue to fulfill the needs of our community and create a 21st century library for our community. Our library serves various different age groups. When you visit our library, you can experience the number of people and all different age groups of people, from toddlers to teens to adults and then young adults, and the seniors, all at the same time. So this is the library which we want to create for our 21st century, so we can provide our community the services they deserve. These are the 10 things which we can improve and which we can add if we expand, or if we are able to expand. Providing a dedicated teen and tween space, and having a maker space, creating a sensory space for autistic childrens and people who are on the spectrum. There's a great need in our community for having a sensory space. Having a separate creative learning play areas for our toddlers and preschoolers. A family focus room and parenting room. Even one of the newest library in our county, when they renovated, they even created a lactating room, which is used almost every day when we talk to their children librarians. Additional public meeting space. In 2013 and 2014, we had focus groups in our Hevertown community who told us that these two meeting rooms we have, they are not enough. We need to have more meeting rooms. We need tutoring space, and we need tutoring rooms because we are, our library is located in the educational campus of Haverford Township, where we have teens and tweens and students from both schools come in our library, and they need space where they can be tutored. We also would like to create a safe and quiet place for our seniors, and give them a living room kind of setting. Now, we want to create an AV lab, audio visual lab, to create multimedia programs. We have been doing virtual programs for one year, and now we are, they're very popular, and we would like to create them professionally, and our staff are able to gain some skills which we would like to utilize by having a proper multimedia area. And we also would like to create a Friends book sale area. We have tremendous, great volunteers in Friends group who would like to serve two to four hours a day in our library. And this book, if we are able to create this book sale area, this will also add a revenue stream for our library. And now I'm going to give it back to Bill Wilson.
Just talk about what that space addition does, and characterize it as being a ripple effect. It starts with providing more space for teens. Right now, we've got a situation where, as Sukrit mentioned, the library is kind of part of an educational campus, surrounded by schools. In the afternoons, the kids descend. What happens when the teens come in is they kind of take over the whole building. It's a small building, there's not a dedicated space for them. And by creating a dedicated space for teens, that would also allow creating space for tweens, that group that is the middle school kids and kids that libraries often lose. That in turn would allow providing more dedicated spaces for young children and families, and want to show you that it'll also have an impact on seniors. Next slide. Here's that second floor we showed you before. Right now, the teen space is kind of an afterthought, really is just a matter of some bookshelves. By creating a dedicated space for the teens and a space for that in-between group of kids, we then are able to provide a safe space for preschoolers and families. Right now, when the teens come in, pretty much the seniors flee the building, the downtown area, or downstairs area, and the interaction between and among young children and seniors is really forced on them. We want to create some spaces that are intergenerational, but we want to make those spaces a choice. We want it to be interaction by design, not by default. So there's this trickle-down, a ripple effect that happens, but by creating more space for teens and dedicated space for teens, we've improved the areas for really all age groups here. Next slide. We'll just go through just a couple of these additional areas. If the teens have dedicated space, the space that is the old bank lobby could be recaptured to really be a senior and adult space. And this is just a rendering of what that space might look like. Next one. Sukrit mentioned tutoring spaces. Right now, a lot of tutoring does take place at the library, but it takes place on the open floor, just at open tables, certainly not ideal. The innovation space, or what some call a maker space, is one of those areas that really attracts teens, but many libraries have found serve all generations. Want to point out, this is a maker space in my own community. I live in a community of above 5,500 people. So this is the type of innovation space that we're seeing even in very, very small libraries, where hands-on learning, support for STEM and STEAM, interactions with the schools can take place. Next one. Sukrit mentioned sensory space, particularly for kids, autistic children, but for others on the spectrum as well. One more. Improved technology spaces. And this is an improvement, you know, what you're seeing here is something that looks pretty glitzy, but it goes down to the very, very mundane as well. A lot of people are bringing their own devices to the library. Library needs to have Wi-Fi that really can support many users, needs to have services like printing from those online devices, plug-ins scattered throughout the building, and so on. So enhanced technology is one of the other impacts of the expanded space. At this point, we'd like to provide you with a little bit of cost information, and I believe Phil and Ken will take this one.
Yeah, Ken, why don't you go through this? Obviously, there's a lot of details underneath this that we'll be glad to discuss, you know, at the appropriate time, but this is sort of where we are on the cost basis. Ken? I think you're gonna have to unmute, Ken.
I gotta find him. Give me a second.
Okay.
All right. All right, can you hear me now? Great, thank you. So these are some of the costs that had been presented back in January 2020. You can see here, we added a column at the end to increase the cost to be in $20.22. So you can see what the renovation of the building without any addition is at the 12 million. As Phil spoke about earlier, the new library at Brookline would have been around 32 million in $20.22, and a new library at Mill Road, and its current location would be 37. So we just revised the cost estimate recently with a third-party cost estimator, and you can see here, cost for construction is about 11.8 million, and then you put the 40% soft cost on, and it gets the project up to approximately 16.5 million. And that is based on 2020, starting construction roughly first, second quarter next year.
Let me just add, if I may, this does not include, I think the township got a million-dollar grant. We plan, the library plans to, if this goes through, to apply for a $750,000 Keystone grant. Deadline for applying is in October. And then, of course, the library will put up some money and certainly try to raise as much money as we can for this.
And it, Phil, if I may, it also does not include any cost for a temporary library.
Yes.
So this is construction-only cost?
I should add, and I meant to say this in the beginning, obviously, we all know that one of the largest problems, and certainly the most local problem we get, is parking. This plan does not increase parking, but it does not decrease it. We're working very closely with the township on a plan to increase parking and get us more onsite parking. So we continue to work with that, but that is, I believe, a separate issue from this, albeit a very important one. Okay. So here's the, you know, the plans for the, the front of the library. This has been in the works for, for quite a while, modern look. Sukrit, go ahead. And then this is what, you know, it looks like. And I look at this and to me, it's a metaphor, what we're talking about. The bank building, that was 1939. That was our initial library. We have to, you know, go through sticks and stones, I guess, to, to get what we needed to, to shape that. And then in 1979, we built on the, the current addition. So 80 years ago, to, because of the good wishes and the foresight of the commissioners and community then, we built the initial library 40 years after that, 40 years ago, 1979. We said we needed more to service the community, keep up with the times. And now 40 years from then, we're now saying, coming back to you and saying, we need a little bit more so we can keep pace with what's going on in other counties, pace with the technology and provide our community with what we all want is a top-notch library. So that's our presentation at this point. We're obviously glad to answer any questions. I know there will be plenty, if we can't do it tonight, we're available at any time to, to, to answer your concerns or questions.
Thank you very much for the excellent presentation. Sure, there are some questions. Doesn't look like there's any tonight, Phil, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the Bureau of Fire update. Commissioner Wexler?
Yes, I have the Bureau of Fire's update from March of 2021. The Haverford Township Bureau of Fire responded to 106 incidents in the month of March. Membership response total for members responding to calls was 1,239 members. Weekly combined training hours for the month was 828 hours. There were two significant incidents for the month. On March 23rd, on Central Avenue in the Bon Air District, crews arrived to find the roof and attic of, on fire. Significant damage to the home. One firefighter suffered an injury and was transported to the hospital when a ceiling collapsed on top of him. Upon returning from the Central Avenue call, members of the Haverford Township Bureau of Fire responded to a working house fire in Springfield Township, where they completed a rescue of a trapped civilian inside the home. Members of the Bureau of Fire are currently attending class at local fire, at the local fire academy for National Firefighter I. Members are taking rope rescue, fire officer and emergency vehicle operations that month, this month. And that's the report for March of 2021. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item, Township Auditor update, Mr. Anderson.
Hello. I reviewed the warrants and expenditures for this meeting. I found no irregularities and all my questions were answered to my satisfaction. Also, as I mentioned in the last meeting, I did get vaccinated and fully vaccinated and I encourage everybody else to do so. Vaccination is the best way of getting, is beating this virus and getting life back to normal. I feel like we're almost there, we just have to get as many people vaccinated as possible. And I also did a little research on this and found that when we had prior pandemic saves, something like smallpox, we did not beat that until we got, that disease was around for hundreds of years. Killed a couple of hundred million people and we did not beat it until we got everybody, until we got enough people vaccinated. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number seven, Mr. Berman, Township Manager's update.
Yes. Commissioners, as you probably heard, the governor has announced that tomorrow, all adults in Pennsylvania will be eligible to sign up for a vaccination. And so I would encourage folks to visit delcopa.gov and click, click on COVID-19 for additional information on how to go ahead and schedule a vaccination appointment. In that regard, in the coming weeks, I will be meeting with senior staff to consider ways that we would be able to reopen your commissioners' meetings safely. And so we want to take this cautiously and as the situation changes, we need to be flexible as well. So we'll be considering that and I'll have more information for you in the coming weeks. That's all I have this evening.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Sorry, thank you. I'm very disappointed in how the state has handled the vaccine program. It's probably one of the last in the country, so I'm happy that finally residents will have hopefully a smooth process. I also want to reiterate, and I talked to Mr. Berman about this, I really believe that we need to start opening up this, this meeting to residents. And do it safely, I get it, but I think there's a way that we can do that. And I hope we do that for, for the May meeting.
I'm sure there'll be discussions. Certainly involve Mr. McCann's in that discussion as well. Anyone else? Item number eight, approval of minutes from the regular meeting minutes of March 8th, 2021.
President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of March 8th, 2021.
There are seconds.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Quinn. Any comments? Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
And Dr. Hart?
Yes. Item number nine, approval of warrants.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Holmes.
President, I move we approve warrant number four of 2021 totaling $3,467,628.20. Prizing the general sewer fund payroll for March 18th, 2021 in the amount of $651,404.29. General fund payroll for March 31, 2021 in the amount of $60,850.37. General sewer fund payroll for April 1st, 2021 in the amount of $629,336.69. General fund disbursement number four of 2021 in the amount of $1,511,284.49. Sewer fund disbursement number four of 2021 in the amount of $286,714.46. Community development block grant fund disbursement number four of 2021 in the amount of $96,497.72. Capital projects fund disbursement number four of 2021 in the amount of $225,784.05. A credit card statement ending February 27th, 2021 in the amount of $5,756.73.
Second.
Second, Commissioner McCloskey?
President, our township auditor has been through these warrants. Any questions he has raised with the township have been answered to his satisfaction. Recommend that we approve these warrants.
Mr. Berman, could you call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Item number 10, Haverford Township Free Library.
President, motion to continue with final design of the library renovation is previously authorized on September 14th, 2020. Or to proceed with the final design and the library expansion concept as requested by the Board of Trustees of Haverford Township Free Library.
Second.
Second is by Commissioner Wexler.
Mr. President.
Sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, we set the agenda up so that the board, whoever, the board could decide on which motion to go.
Right, I'm gonna strongly encourage my colleagues to proceed, to proceed with the final design of library expansion concept as requested by the Board of Trustees for the Haverford Free Township Library. I think the presentation that they just gave was professional, was what we asked them to do. What we've asked over a long period of time in terms of establishing a, a modern 21st century building that we can be proud of. It's one of the final buildings that we have in this town that we have not either upgraded significantly or flat out built new. We took what amounted to better part of a two-year pause to explore the issues of Brookline. For a variety of reasons, that did not work out. The, the reality is costs of construction are not going to go down. This, this, the numbers that are being presented to us are significantly less than what would be at Brookline. And it allows the library to expand in a way to give quality service to all of our residents and quality service to frankly, a community that wants and deserves, given what we believe this township to be. Our community deserves a library, that we at least make every effort to live up to that. So I would strongly encourage us to at least proceed with the expansion plans that were presented to us tonight.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
What, did, clarify this for me, did, did we commit to a, a figure yet for the renovation?
No, we committed to, in fact, we didn't commit to either. We, we at the, when we decided not to proceed at Brookline, we were choosing to go in the direction of renovations. But we didn't commit funds at that point.
So what is the final cost for the, well, we don't know the final cost, but the estimated cost right now for taxpayer, what was that?
Approximately 16 and a half million to do the expansion.
And what would it be if we didn't do the expansion?
Approximately 12 and a half million. So it's about four to four and a half million more, right?
And we did get the grant that was referenced, the $1 million that the state has given us. And Mr., the, the board is also prepared to apply for an additional grant of 750, now whether we get that or not. But I, I just think, given the length of time we've been discussing this library, that, that difference of, you know, three to four million dollars. We're, we're providing the library with what is their request in terms of what they believe will allow them to not have the perfect solution of a brand-new library built from the ground up and at Brookline. But provide the services that they believe the community wants, and I certainly do as well.
President?
Mr. Holmes?
It was Mr. Siegel.
Oh, Mr. Siegel, I'm sorry.
Okay. I, I would agree with Commissioner McCloskey. And, and just for the public, so they know, that members of the board, we had been, we had been, we had seen a preview of this presentation. So the fact that we didn't ask questions wasn't because we had none, but we, we did have a preview of this. With regard to where we are, I agree with Commissioner McCloskey, people, I, my first preference would still be to build a new library as the library board desires, but that's not where we're going. You know, this township needs a modern library. We need a, a library that can serve the public now and for generations. And the expansion as proposed helps them move forward in a way that they can do that. I, I encourage my colleagues to agree with that proposal. Commissioner McCloskey, you, you talked about the condition of properties. It was, we started discussing the library when I was first appointed property committee chair in 2009. And in that time, you know, we've been able to replace all of the aging infrastructure in terms of buildings, except the library. And I'm thrilled that we're at a point where at least now, there is finality on a decision. And that we can finally move forward. The next step, the follow, Commissioner D'Amelio's question is, the next step is, we fund this and we would be doing that very shortly because we have to borrow. And, you know, the rates are still very favorable to do this now, so thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. President?
Mr. Holmes?
Mr. President, like Commissioner Siegel, I, I did have different ideas when we, when we've been discussing this about building a new library, building in a new site. But like Mr. Siegel as well, our board has acted and made a decision to keep the library where it is. And having decided to do that, the best thing for us to do on that site is to do the most we can do with it and do that. So I think of the Blue Route being finished and within days of traffic going on it, people realizing it was one or two lanes too too small and there would be nothing more regrettable for us as a board to undertake a task at the old library site, renovate it. And after the renovation was over, we mad at ourselves for not having the foresight, the frankly, the courage to, to, to do the job that we need to do. So I appreciate the efforts that were put into this expansion project. It looks, it looks very effective. It is a very, very intelligent, economical and efficient use of the space that we have there. People are used to the library being where it is. So we have that in terms of, certainly still have people going to the library who currently use it in its current space. So I'm for the expansion. Mr. Siegel indicated, it's no better time than now for us to undertake this. Money has never been expensive, especially for our township.
Mr. President, I have another question.
Mr. D'Amelio?
What would, let's, let's just put the numbers out again, what were the costs if we did go to Brookline?
All right, the updated cost if we were to do it in
16 now, right, with this, those numbers are verified by?
These are estimates, but the, and they're based on building in 2022. So the estimated to, if we had built it Brookline, it was estimated that it would cost $32 million. There we go.
How much, I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, let me bring this up, I can't see over there, I'm sorry.
32 million. A little less than double what we're talking about.
The new library at Brookline was 32, okay. And these construction numbers at $16 million, who, did Panotti, Dave, did you verify those numbers?
Can I, can I speak to that?
Let me ask Mr. Panotti, please, sorry, first. I'm sorry, I'll let you speak, is Dave on?
He's not on, Dave had to go, Chuck Faulkner is with us. Panotti did not get involved in the cost estimates for the proposed expansion.
Mr. Gelsmith can speak.
Yeah, I, Dave Matthews, I mean, Ken Matthews can speak. We did have an independent consultant that came up with these numbers. They didn't, they weren't come up by the library itself, they were verified by an independent consultant. Can you, can you speak to that?
I gotta bring him back, just give me a second.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
When you're ready, Ken.
Thank you. So yeah, so in conjunction with Bernard and we had a third-party estimator called ICI do, do an estimate of the project. They basically took the old drawing, well, the old drawings, the, the renovation plans, just refresh them to make sure that they were up to date in $20.22 and then with the expansion, constructing the new addition and those costs involved with that. And then with the expansion, constructing the new addition and those costs involved with that, they added that on, and that's how they came up with the 11.8 million. So it was a third-party estimate, I think, I believe, similar to what the other estimates that were done in the past. And then the, you know, the 4.7 million dollars you see here was just a 40% number put on top of that. That would be typical for a construction estimate to get us to the 16.5 million.
So is it conceivable that the cost will be higher than 16 million?
Sure.
Eighteen, twenty million?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, Steve, it's like any construction project we've done. We've done like four of these. They gotta get bid out.
Okay, I, I.
We've been.
I'm sorry, I get that, Ken, but I'm trying to, trying to put numbers out there that are, I think, more realistic and possibly is 20 million dollars.
I, that, that's not more realistic. You're just saying a number. What's realistic number sixteen?
Well, we keep hearing, well, let's say sixteen to twenty million, right?
Well, why, where are you getting twenty?
Sixteen to forty.
Okay, well, sixteen to forty.
It's not realistic. We have a number from consultants.
Realistic, what I'm asking, what would be, is it possible? It's quite possible that it's more than sixteen, right?
Well, if I, I could, having overseen these numbers over the years and seen them both internally and from the library, the numbers that we are seeing here are wholly consistent with the estimates that we have received over the years, both for the
He just lost it.
Both for the original plan and, you know, the numbers for the addition, I can't speak to. But I can say that the, the, the projected cost, if we were doing it as we had originally foreseen, are completely consistent with the numbers that the property committee presented and that the library's presented. So yes, there can be variation, and there's no question about that. But these are within the range we have discussed for, you know, a decade or more.
If I, if I may say one thing, I think there's also a chance we could come in with a lower number. You know, so I, it's just not, you know, my, my goal would be to make sure that we don't go above and also to look ways, working with the township, that we can decrease this number.
But I just think that 4.5 million is a lot to ask the tax payers of the township, so that's my say.
Mr. President. Mr. President.
Mr. Wexler.
Put in my two cents. I think I'm kind of proud of the way this board has done things over the last 12 years. We've, we've gone through the projects, we've built the crack, any recreation center for our township. We've improved and built the vehicle maintenance facility down at the Township Yard to service all our vehicles, that project. We've taken a decrepit old police department, and we've turned it into this combined township administration building in that project. And we've done, then moved on, and we put our priorities into parks improvements, where we're putting several million dollars there. The last major one in my mind is the library. We have kind of pushed this down and lowered the priority over the last couple of years. We've kicked the can, so to speak, down the road. I think it's, I think it's a fitting project. And since we can't, we didn't, we, we agreed not to spend $30 million and build a new building at the Brookline School. But I think this is a fair compromise for our members of the township that'll take us into the next 40 years. So I'm, I'd voice my opinion of it based upon our track record in giving our residents the recreation center, improving our maintenance facility, a new police department, state-of-the-art, state-of-the-art township building, adding to that with our parks improvement, and then now a library to round out our township. I think it's an accomplishment we could all be proud of. And to Steve's point, there is, I, I think there's more money down the road that we have to spend, because the significant thing that we still haven't fixed is the parking issue at the library. So I think in addition, if we approve or not approve this, no matter what we do, we still have to keep in the front burner that we're gonna have to try and build a, or find a place to put a municipal parking lot to service that municipal building, the library building as part of our municipality as well. So whatever that, there is additional costs there that we have to look at down the road. So I think, Steve, you're, you're right to looking there what the final costs are. But I think based upon what we've done and what we've given our residents over the last 12 years, this is a project worthy of us taking on, is my opinion. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I, I agree with Commissioner Quinn. I mean, my concern is, in this, in this era of COVID and the pandemic, and how many people are out of work, four and a half million to five million is, is asking a lot when there's a lot of people hurting right now. And thank God they're getting stimulus checks, but I just feel that it's a little excessive at this point. That's just my opinion.
All right, if there's no more other comments, why don't we vote, and we're gonna be voting to proceed with the final design of the library expansion concept as requested by the Board of Trustees of the Haverford Township Free Library. Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
So I'm voting for the final design of the library renovation.
No, no, we're voting.
For the whole thing?
You, you're voting for, for, this is to do the expansion.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I understand now. Thank you. My vote, no.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
No.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Thank you. Next item in the agenda, number 11, tax settlements and stipulation of council.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, I move we approve the settlement and stipulation of council on the matter of an owner-initiated property tax assessment appeal for property located at 3035 Darby Road, DC Folio number 22-03-00655-01, pending in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County, case number 2020-008926, and authorize our council and proper officers of the board to execute the necessary documents.
Second. Second by Commissioner Aliva. Any comments?
Mr. Berman.
We've been advised on by our, our finance director as well as our solicitor, various settlements and stipulations with regard to the property tax assessments. There'll be two more of them. Sorry, there'll be four more of them after this one for us to consider. As this board is aware, we are never the primary driver in any of these appeals. School District, which has more tax dollars at stake, are the ones that typically meet these. It is my recommendation, and it's not inconsistent with the advice we've gotten professionally, for us to approve this.
Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. President, I move we approve settlement and stipulation of council on the matter of an owner-initiated property tax assessment appeal for property located at 8 Craig Lane, DC Folio number 22-04-00161-00, pending in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County, case number 2020-008852, and authorize council and the proper officers of the board to execute the necessary documents.
Have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Quinn.
What I said earlier applies to this one as well.
Mr. Berman, can you call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, I move we approve the settlement and stipulation of council on the matter of an owner-initiated property tax assessment appeal for property located at 310 Valley Road, DC Folio number 22-02-01207-00, pending in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County, case number 2020-008731, and authorize council and proper officers of the board to execute the necessary documents.
Have a second.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Aliva. Mr. Berman, please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, I move we approve the settlement and stipulation of council on the matter of an owner-initiated property tax assessment appeal for property located at 2 Dartmouth Lane, DC Folio number 22-04-00228-01, pending in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County, case number 2021-000804, and authorize council and proper officers of the board to execute the necessary documents.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wexler. Mr. Berman, can you call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Mr. Holmes again.
Mr. President, I move we approve the settlement and stipulation of council on the matter of an owner-initiated property tax assessment appeal for property located at 23 College Avenue, DC Folio number 22-04-00082-01, pending in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County, case number 2020-008591, and authorize council and proper officers of the board to execute the necessary documents.
Second.
Second by Commissioner D'Amelio. Mr. Berman, can you call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Item number 12, ordinance number P52021, traffic second reading.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. D'Amelio.
Motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P52021, establishing, establishing traffic restrictions on the following highways. Parking of all vehicles prohibited at all times, Vernon Road, South Side, at the T turnaround, on the southwest corner to a point 30 feet west thereof. Stop intersection on Linwood Drive at the intersection of Maryland Avenue, making this a three-way stop intersection.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Aliva. Mr. Berman, can you call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Item number 13, ordinance number P62021, civil service regulation change, second reading.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. D'Amelio.
To make a motion to approve the Civil Service Commission's removal of Article III, Applications and Qualifications subsection 32-19, subsection B, eliminating a candidate's requirement for Act 120.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Quinn. Any comments? Mr. Berman, can you call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Item number 14, ordinance number P82021, traffic first reading.
Somebody take that?
Let me take it?
Yes, Commissioner D'Amelio.
Next, Mr. President, to make a motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P82021, authorizing traffic restrictions on the following highway. Establish parking time limited, Railroad Avenue, East Side from Walnut Lane to Millbrook Lane, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday, two-hour limit. Parking of all vehicles prohibited at all times, Railroad Avenue, West Side from Walnut Lane to Millbrook Lane.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wexler. Mr. Berman, can you call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Item number 15, resolution number 22172021, waste stream.
Mr. President, motion to adopt.
Go ahead, Mr. McCluskey.
Motion to adopt resolution number 2217-2021, eliminating systematic environmental injustice in Delaware County's waste stream.
There, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Aliva. I believe, if anyone has questions, Commissioner Holmes, there was an updated agenda put out this morning.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I still have some issues with this. I get what is trying to be done, and I agree with that. But I just, but if we move it, then that plant will still be, that plant will still be, be there. So I don't know, I, I, I think it's, I think what we're trying, I think what they're trying to do is good, but I just don't see, and I'm having a tough, tough time grasping that part of it.
I think, I'm not sure if Noel Smith from the EAC is on.
I don't see him.
Okay. I think, my understanding in talking to the individuals from the EAC, you know, that the resolution has been slightly altered. I mean, essentially, assuming that there will be another contract signed, but they're asking that be for a shorter length of time, so that the, our waste disposal, how we proceed can be evaluated and see if this is the best way of going forward. I think they're also, would like to see the amount lessened of trash that needs to be in the new contract, so that if the town, if the county is lowering the amount of trash that they're sending, that we don't get penalized because we're sending less trash.
Yeah.
So, and again, we're, basically, we're asking the Delaware County Council to consider this. We're not gonna vote on the ultimate.
Yeah, no, I just, yeah, I just have those issues and I just can't get past that. But I get what the, I get what the, what the EAC did and what Noel did. I think they did a great, great job. But I just, I just can't get past those issues.
I, Mr. President, I have issues. This is, ultimately, if we, if we send our trash somewhere else, it's gonna be further away. We're gonna have increased transportation costs. Also, I don't think we've taken into account what the people of Chester have asked for. We're telling them what they're doing. Mayor Kirkland has, has come out publicly and said that they're a great employer. They represent about $20 million worth of revenue to the city of Chester. They provide a ton of jobs. And he's kind of upset that other municipalities are trying to tell him what's good for your community when he's living down there. They've had nothing but their, their council members have been taking a positive stance on it. So in the fact that it's gonna increase our cost, most likely, because our transportation and trash, I don't see our trash going down unless we're gonna compost it all. But, but, but forcing our will on to the city of Chester when they're saying that it's a good neighbor, it's a good economic source for their city, and their council people are also explaining the safeguards and inspections that their city and their codes department has put in that has ensured that the facility is operating in compliance for us to take a stand to tell another community what to do, I, I think things will play out from a business sense with county council. So from that aspect, I'm really not in a position that I'm gonna force judgment upon them, but.
If I could clarify, the Chester County, the City of Chester Council was responding to a, a different resolution that was addressed to them from this, that citizens' council. The, this resolution is, is from our, was drafted by our EAC, which, and was not being sent to the city of Chester. It's being sent to.
Being sent to county council, which is the contractor. But I understand, but it affects one of our fellow community and municipalities very, very strongly if it's pulled out of there, so.
Can you hear me?
Now, okay.
But, I mean, this is about the environment. It's not trying to hurt another community.
Yes. Trash esteem plant is the largest looter in southeastern Pennsylvania, or at least in Delaware County.
The only one.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Holmes.
Commissioner Wexler and Commissioner Quinn, I don't want you guys to feel alone. I also will not be supporting this resolution. The points you've raised, Holmes, both of you raised, I think, are, are legitimate points. I'm still not comfortable, after all this time, that there are not financial consequences to. to, that, that are, that go beyond the life of this contract. And I, I have, I have my concerns. I, probably, there's a lot of people who find it pretty ironic for me to have a problem with telling other people what to do and virtue signaling, but in this circumstance, I really think this situation is much more complicated than we just want to get rid of trash to steam plants. I think the city of Chester's input is very important, and the fact that we're not directing this at Chester, but instead of directing it around them to somebody else in the decision-making process, whose decision will have a great deal of effect on the city of Chester, I think is, doesn't give me comfort that their reaction to this resolution would be any more positive than their reaction was to the resolution directly at them, so for that reason, I will also be opposing.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Siegel.
Thank you. When we first discussed this, I had concerns, we all want to eliminate pollution, et cetera, but I had concerns about some of the information. I had concerns about the fact that we have not, as one of the largest communities in Delaware County, gotten any, or communicated with, to my knowledge, really, any information to or from the county, which is to whom this is directed, and that they are, you know, obviously, the entity this is directed to. I also, and I believe all members of the board, received a communication from Covanta, which raises questions about the accuracy of some of the information in the resolution, and my guess is that the, if we look at what Covanta said in this resolution, perhaps it's somewhere in between, but I'm not comfortable supporting this as it stands. I think the better method is working behind the scenes to talk to county council and to see how we get them to commit. I don't think this accomplishes that. I don't think, you know, publicly doing these types of things, it feels good for some, but I don't think it accomplishes the result here or elsewhere, so I won't be supporting this either. And I agree with my colleagues as well, on what they've said.
Just also clarify that the Covanta response was not to our resolution, the Covanta response was to a different resolution, which had many different facts in it. The EAC, when they drafted this resolution, did not include some of the, did not include any of the points that Covanta responded to.
Yeah, I guess, I, I mean, I'm not going to waste more time before we vote, but I would just say, I guess I'm just reading it differently than everyone. I mean, the way, the way I read it is, we're asking county council to consider what the environmental costs are, and it's being brought up by residents of the city of Chester, who are having sort of the health issues and the environmental reaction to this plant. And it's not even saying, don't renew the, renew the contract, it's just saying, you know, we need, this is something that with increased information that we have, we need to come up with a better solution than the one that currently exists. And, you know, that would include taking into consideration the financial costs that all my colleagues have talked about, but, you know, we can vote on it.
Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
No.
Mr. Holmes.
No.
Mr. Wexler.
No.
Mr. Quinn.
No.
Dr. Hart.
Resolution does not pass. Item number sixteen, resolution number twenty-two eighteen twenty twenty-one.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-two eighteen dash twenty twenty-one, that Haverford Township hereby requests a construction grant in the amount of one hundred and sixty thousand dollars from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, known as the DCNR, to be used for construction of a pervious walking path around Polo Field. And be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners does hereby designate Brian Barrett, Director of Parks and Recreation Department, as the official to execute all documents and agreements between the Township and the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant.
Second. Second to my Commissioner Aliva. Mr. Berman, can you call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Item number seventeen, resolution number twenty-two nineteen twenty twenty-one, authorizing filing date extension of the twenty twenty final and twenty twenty-one estimated business privilege and mercantile tax return.
President.
Yes, Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, I move we adopt resolution twenty-two nineteen of twenty twenty-one, extending the filing deadline for the Township of Haverford twenty twenty final slash twenty twenty-one estimated business privilege and mercantile tax returns from April fifteenth twenty twenty-one to May seventeen twenty twenty-one, or such other filing deadline as determined by the Internal Revenue Service.
Second.
Second to my Commissioner Siegel.
Just frankly, since the ingredients of our local mercantile tax and business privilege taxes basically are the forms that accompany people's ten forties, and those aren't due until May seventeenth, our township finance director and, and others believed that it made sense to extend our deadlines, so it was co-terminous with the newly set IRS deadline.
Mr. Berman, can you call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Item number eighteen, contract award.
Mr. President, Mr. President, motion to award Darby Road Streetscape Phase Two lighting contract to Cooper Electric Promol PA one nine zero zero eight under Co-Stars Contract zero zero eight two sixty-eight in the amount of twenty-three thousand one hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-six cents.
Second to my Commissioner Quinn. Any comments? Mr. Berman, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Item number nineteen, dedication, Parks and Rec Department requests to rename Steel Field part of Hilltop Recreation Area in honor of James Stewart.
Mr. President, I make a motion to rename part of the Hilltop Recreation Complex area along Steel Road, the football field, in honor of James Stewart, resident of Ninth Ward for seventy-eight years.
There are second.
Second.
Second to my Commissioner Quinn.
Mr. President, during, when I was approached by a group of residents about this several months ago, I brought it up to this board and then later to the Park Board, I've met with and spoken to a little over three hundred residents that testified to me and have written me about the character of Mr. Stewart. He was a football coach in the grade school CYO program that played their games at Steel Field. He was the summer manager of the Ironic Swim Club, which is the, basically, the recreation complex for the Ninth Ward. And also, he was a teacher, a longtime teacher of high school at Malvern Preparatory School, and later spent thirty-five years as the headmaster there. In, in meeting with these people, I, I can attest to the character of the man as a resident, his mentorship of thousands of youth from the Ninth Ward to there. There's been, in the last couple of days, there's been some questions about naming it for people that have worked at the field. What, what I am looking at is not so much for somebody there, but the character of a resident who meant so much to so many people, and that's the reason that I took that honor and went to the Parks Board with the documentation, and the Parks Board unanimously recommended to the Board of Commissioners their approval of this request. So, I think it's, it's a fitting thing. I, I'm honored to be part of, of doing it, after getting to know him in detail, based upon the literally hundreds of testimonials that I received. In addition to those people that lived here, I've received testimonials from many members of people outside the Township, specifically at Malvern Prep, and past residents of the Ninth Ward have moved away and grown up, and who now, whose children are back in here, and their kids are now playing here. It's just, it attests to the character of the individual and the memorance of they doing there. And our hope would be to dedicate this field on Thanksgiving morning at their annual Turkey Bowl, which attracts about close to two thousand people each year for that game. If there's any questions of me about the individual or anything, I'd be more than happy to, to answer them.
President.
Mr. Holmes.
President, I don't have any direct questions of Commissioner Wexler, but I, as, as a resident raised the issue of a five-year rule, I, I think it's important, maybe, that we clarify or state unequivocally that there is no such rule that the Board of Commissioners is bound by, whatever the Park and Rec Board has, has done in the past, all these decisions ultimately fall to us, and so unless somebody corrects me otherwise, and I'm staring at our Township's, do so, that we are, we are not, by undertaking this act tonight, we are not unwinding or undoing some rule that's been imposed, and I'm certainly aware of at least one other field that we named, after a former commissioner who, passing, I don't think, satisfied the temporal requirements that were raised by our speaker earlier in the night, so I just think it's very important for this board to make a clear, unequivocal statement that we are not violating our own rules, we're not violating any local ordinance we passed, or any statewide restrictions that we have, and this reference to Kennedy Rule, frankly, is a little shocking to me, considering that Cape Canaveral was officially named Cape Kennedy about eight days after Kennedy's assassination, so where five years came from, I'll, I'll never know.
I'll agree. I think if you, if you remember when I first circulated this request, I included the Parks Recreation's memorandum about naming parks, and it was just a guideline, it was not a hard and fast rule, and that was in the packet that I sent to all the Commissioners back then, so.
If I could just speak to that, we have, the, the Kennedy Rule is, is, comes from everything being named after Kennedy, after he died, so right after he was shot, it was so shocking that, you know, we had a stadium named in Philadelphia after JFK, there were so many things, so now people say, let's not name so much, so many things after people. I don't disagree with, with Commissioner Wexler, there is no rule, and in fact, as, as Larry stated, the Park Board actually voted not to name the field after a former commissioner, and we did it anyway. We, we overruled the Park Board on that one. So, this board is not bound by any, any, any other of our advisory boards to do what they say. This board makes its decision based on, on what we think is, is the right thing to do.
Mr. Chairman, here's the problem I have, I, I have no doubt of the character of Mr. Stewart. I'm sure his dedication, his character are top-notch. My concern is, I, I've been contacted by other individuals that think that they're worthy, or someone they know is worthy of that. I think we need to take a step back and look at whatever rule or guidelines that we want to set for the future of renaming fields, or, I mean, we're running out of fields if we keep doing this, but it could be buildings or whatever. We need, I, my personal opinion is we need to take a step back as a board and, and make a decision, because it's really, you know, other people think that we're not being fair. So, that's just my opinion, and it has nothing to do with Mr. Stewart's character, his dedication. I certainly admire that, but I think there are other people that are equally as concerned when they heard about it, so it's not, it's not really just cut and dry one person. So, in light of that, I would recommend that we table this for now, until we have a work session and discuss it further, and, and try to come up with some, some kind of guidelines or plan or rule. I don't, I don't know what you want to call it, I don't know where the five rule, rule came from, I've heard it too. Members of the Park Board had, have said that to me, I mean, I don't know if Tim Denny, the former director, came up with that, or if it came from Larry Jantilly, or even before Larry, Mike English, but I, I did hear that, and Mario is absolutely right. The Parks Board, with the naming of the commissioner, we went against the recommendation of the Parks Board, so we're not bound by that, we understand it's a recommendation, but, you know, we have boards, we have commissions, and we should sometimes, I guess, we need to take into consideration that, you know, we wanted to increase that board to eighteen people, or did we? We already did that, right? We didn't, okay, but anyway, I think my, my motion is to table it right now until we have a work session and discuss it further.
Can I just, before you do a motion to table, can I, can I just make a suggestion, though, that, you know, I, I think you began saying that you didn't want it to be about Mr. Stewart, and I don't know Mr. Stewart, and frankly, this was in the Ninth Ward, and I took Bill's word on it, and I'm willing to vote for it, but I think if we do table this now, we turn it into about Mr. Stewart, so my suggestion would be that we vote now, there's no doubt, there's no question about that this volunteer, and I, and I totally agree that there's thousands and thousands of volunteers in Haverford Township that, you know, help run this town and help run organizations, you know, we talk about Connor's aunt that passed away a couple of months, months ago, you know, there's, 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 there's plenty for that, but I don't want this to turn into something about Mr. Stewart, so my suggestion would be if we're going to create a policy, or if we're going to set some sort of guidelines, that we do that, but that we take this vote tonight. Just my two cents.
All right, there is a motion to table, is there a second? Any other comments? Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
This is, this is the vote on.
This is the vote on, yeah, we don't have a second.
Second, right, okay.
President, you should just rule from the chair that the motion to table does not have a second, therefore, that motion is not before us, and now we have the resolution.
There was not a second, so we do not have a motion to table, and we're going to be voting on the original motion to rename the park.
Just the football field.
Is it going to call the roll? Just, just a, just a football field, not the whole park.
The motion that was initially.
It is still the Hilltop Recreation Area, and there's many, there's other fields there, several baseball fields, several diamonds, challenger field, other things.
We're voting on the motion that was you presented.
That's correct.
Okay, that's good.
Are you ready?
Larry has.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. D'Amelio.
No.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Item number twenty, continuation of the Citizens Forum for non-agenda items. Mr. Berman, is there anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, before you begin that, can we bring this up again in exec, not executive session, I'm sorry, in, in the work session, the, the renaming of fields and buildings or whatever, can we?
We certainly can discuss that.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Dr. Hart, I don't see any hands raised.
Okay.
And I'll reset my vote to yes, to make it a nine, eight, zero, by the way. I'm changing my votes and make it unanimous to change the field for him.
I don't think you can, can you?
Yeah, you can.
I don't think so.
Commissioners have, they've done that in the past.
Yeah, but I don't think you can vote on the same motion twice. Yeah, but I don't think you can vote on the same motion twice.
I'll make my dissent because Robert's Rules to me is a guideline to run a meeting. So our charter, I think, doesn't call for the ability to change your mind real quick.
I think, no, no.
That's just my opinion, but.
Okay, I I understand your opinion, but we had on a vote here, we we cast a vote, and we were not allowed to vote on the same motion twice. So a commissioner is trying to vote on the same motion twice, and that is by state law, I believe.
Well, we're guided by Robert's Rules and under Robert.
I understand that Robert's Rules are a set of guidelines, but we were not allowed, we were prohibited from voting twice on the same ordinance. I remember.
That's if an ordinance was denied, if I could.
Do we remember?
So.
Do we remember that order?
Sorry. I I if I if I may, Commissioner Demilio, I appreciate the gesture you're making, and it is not it is not unprecedented. We have had votes before on this board for appointments to positions where it wasn't unanimous, but afterwards, a commissioner asked for it to be reconsidered unanimous. If for anything, just for the official record to to indicate that that some issue or some support or some individual person got unanimous support after what might have been a principled discussion about the process or something else that required somebody to cast a no vote in something that was otherwise overwhelmingly yes. So whether or not anybody here allows it to happen, at least I'd like to acknowledge, Commissioner, that it's a nice gesture, and we recognize that it is to reflect that this is not at all about Mr. Stewart.
Exactly.
Instead, your principled view about a process that you would like to continue to investigate. So I appreciate what you're trying to do.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
As do I.
I think you could bring that up again in other business of just your discussion. We're not going to change the vote now, but.
If I may.
Yes.
Robert's Rules says that with regard to a member requesting to change a vote, a member has the right to change a vote on a motion until the result of the vote has been announced by the presiding order or officer. Once the result of a vote has been announced, a member who wishes to change a vote must request unanimous consent to do so. A request for unanimous consent to change a vote may only come may only be granted if it comes promptly after the result has been announced and before any intervening debate or business.
That's how you get around.
Mr. Demilio's request unanimous.
I knew a lawyer could figure a way to get around that.
Two lawyers, boy, I tell you.
Thank you, Mr. Bob.
Do we have?
Thank you, Mr. Siegel.
Yes, can we have the unanimous vote that Mr. Demilio can reverse his vote?
So moved.
Aye.
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 Thank you, Commissioner Siegel, and thank you to this board for that. Sorry, I added another 10 minutes. That's usually.
Read it.
You're not allowed to talk at the end.
Make sure it's short, I promise you, it won't be long.
I think about how much we all learned.
Okay, item number.
We just learned something new tonight, right? Thank you, Commissioner Siegel.
You're welcome.
Item number 21, new business. Anyone have any new business? Item number 22, other business. Mr. Demilio.
All I want to say is God bless Andy Lewis. None.
Mr. Aliva.
I will second that, Steve. God bless Andy Lewis. I have nothing.
Okay, Mr. McCluskey.
So I I just want to also mention, you know, I think I think it's a developing situation, but a certainly hopeful peace in Minnesota tonight. And my family goes that my heart goes out to the family of Dante Wright. You know, death is death is 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 seems seems sad, but, you know, it's it's exhausting to constantly be reminded of work that we still need to do, but will continue to do the work. I did want to just mention for people in the third and fourth, sixth and fifth wards that Ardmore Bridge is going to be closed, even though it feels like it just opened temporarily. PennDOT is installing the railings that were backordered above the tracks. You know, I'm hoping this gets done as soon as possible, and the bridge will return to being open just when people were starting to get used to it. And to end on a positive note is, Mr. Vermon said in the beginning, tomorrow, everyone 16 and older is eligible to get their COVID vaccine. You know, we're there's light at the end of this tunnel, hopefully. Spring is coming, nice weather. Hopefully, everyone can enjoy some fresh air, be safe and be well. Thanks.
Commissioner Siegel.
Thank you. I don't have anything. Thank you.
Commissioner Holmes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing.
Commissioner Wexler.
Just want to say thank you to the township staff for the successful shredding event the other day. Sold out almost immediately by 10:30. Also, my kudos to the Hilltop Civic Association for their community event in this time of COVID by having a food truck at the at the Hilltop Recreation Complex in the parking lot serving pizza last week. Also, their fundraiser for the park, they raised about $800 selling sweatshirts and t-shirts, the red ones with Hilltop on them. And their next quarterly meeting is May 27. And also, my prayers and my family's prayers are also with Commissioner Lewis for a healthy recovery. That's all I have.
Commissioner Quinn.
Okay, I have a few few things, and I agree with what you guys said. God God bless Andy and and praying praying for him and for for his family and all of his friends. And also, I would like to give a thank you to Public Works, to Bub Bobby from Public Works. I had I had a right this issue in my ward where something was not picked they picked up, and he got right they were right on on it and solved the issue. And thanks to Danny and his staff for helping me out with something else, too. And the barriers on on or on Brooklyn, I know everybody up there is real thrilled with that, so thank you to or to Public Works and to to the police. And I think that's all I have. So thank you, and happy birth birth or birthday to Mrs. Berber Mel, and it was good to reread that out tonight. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Quinn. I have just my thoughts and prayers are with the other commissioners for Commissioner Lewis and and his family. You have a motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourned.
We're adjourned.